Good evening. Without objection, we will reconvene from our executive session. And we welcome you to the voting session for this April. And the first thing is for Mr. Morgan to lead us in our inspiration and the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To be quite honest, when it comes to inspiration, I just remembered that I had to do inspiration. So, I just want to say that I think there's very little in this world that can supersede being a servant to others. The ability to help others fulfills my heart. It's something that runs deep in my soul and spirit every single day. And I'm happy that I have the pleasure and privilege to serve as a school board member. Would please all rise for the pledge.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Superintendent, turn it over to you. Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the board, if you will, join me down front. And I'll ask Ms. Donna Lowery to come forward and bring us our board recognitions for this evening.
Good evening, Chairman Chastain, members of the board, and Superintendent Ragsdale. We are thrilled to announce that the McKeachern High School Girls Basketball Team became Georgia's first girls' basketball team in decades to win four straight titles in Class 7A. The Lady Indians proved once again they are a powerful force on the court by snagging the state championship title in a 75-68 win over Norcross High School. At this time, we would like to invite Coach Phyllis Arthur, Assistant Coach Myra Kamis, Assistant Principal Crystal Watley, and the McKeachern High School Girls Basketball Team to join the board at the front of the room. We're excited that the Dodge &amp; Chamber Orchestra won first place in the Middle School Division of the American String Teachers Association National Orchestra Festival. The band is under the direction of Ashley Cully and April Cole. The board would now like to recognize Dodge &amp; Principal Dr. Laura Lee Hill and District Instrumental Music Supervisor Chris Farrell, along with the Dodge &amp; Chamber Orchestra National Champions at the front of the room.
Great job, young man. Great job. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Tech K-12 Inventure Challenge.
Congratulations.
The Dewest team won for their design of illumination gloves, which are running gloves with LED
Congratulations. Great job, young man. Thank you for what you do.
lights and reflective tape that are also touchscreen compatible for smartphone operation.
Yes, yes. Thank you for what you do. Yes. Thank you for what you do, sir. Yes. Yes. Congratulations. That's all you have. That's all you have. All except for... (Laughter) Take a picture.
Team members include Jack Cowan, Thomas Well, and Alex Whiteside, and target teachers Brandy Kiesler and Kristen Perla. Inventure champions, please join your principal Peggy Fleming and Advanced Learning Program Supervisor Kara Kessel. Sarah Kessel at the front of the room to be recognized.
(Applause) Thank you for what you do. Yes. 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 Thank you for what you do.
We are thrilled that we also have two high school wrestling champions with us here tonight. First, Cal High School's Sam Ashway went undefeated this season, which sealed his position in 182 pounds at the Wrestling State Championship for Class 5A. Sam, please come forward for board recognition, along with wrestling coach Steve Ladizori and Principal Dr. Andy Bristow.
Good job. Good job.
Our second wrestling state champion tonight is Alatuna High School's Cody Anderson, who captured the Class 6A title at 152 pounds. Cody, please come forward to be congratulated by the board, along with Principal John Kelly and Assistant Wrestling Coach Andrew Peters. Do not go far, Principal Kelly. Alatuna has not done yet. Alatuna High School's Caitlin McHugh swam her way to a first-place state swimming title in the 500 meters freestyle. The board would like to congratulate Caitlin, her coach Dr. Jennifer McDora, and Principal Kelly, front of the room. We're pleased to announce that Marty Bladus of Campbell High School has been named Cobb County Library Media Specialist of the Year. Marty has demonstrated exemplary leadership as a library media specialist in every way. She has worked tirelessly to transform the Campbell facility into a learning commons, coordinating communications between school administrators, district staff, and program stakeholders to ensure that the changes are focused on serving students' needs for 21st century education. To help honor Marty's success, as she is recognized by the board, we also asked Principal Jean Walker and Library Media Supervisor Holly Frilott to come forward. Congratulations.
How you doing? It's good to see you. It's very good to see you. Yeah. Thank you for what you do. Thank you. Yes. I know you're impressed with what you've done. You've done so much. Congratulations. (Inaudible) Thank you for what you do. Thank you. Yes. I know you're impressed with what you've done. You've done so much. Congratulations. (Inaudible) Just call me a wiz. (Inaudible) All right.
Well, congratulations again to all their achievements, to everybody here. And this concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a few more people coming in, and we want to make room for as many as we can. Okay, Mr. Doyle, are you ready? All right. Okay, now it's time for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have 11 speakers tonight. How much time are we able to allot?
Let's do two minutes.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll have two minutes per speaker. I would ask everyone to observe the proper rules of decorum under policy BCBI for public participation in board meetings. And I will try to remember to give everyone a 30-second warning, and you can see the time remaining on the red clock at the front and at the back of the room. Our first speaker is Cornell Longuino, who will discuss IAS charter renewal, and he will be followed by Carrie Schrock.
Mr. Chairman, rest of the board members, Superintendent Ragsdale. Good evening. My name is Cornell Longuino, and I am the Board Chair for the International Academy of Smyrna. Our position throughout this entire renewal process has always been to remain a part of the Cobb County School District, and that has not changed. IAS is a school of choice for all of our families. Many of them drive past their local schools to get to IAS on a daily basis. About this time last year, the board recognized that we were not in alignment with meeting the requirements from an accountability, involvement, and oversight standpoint. We strategically restructured the makeup of our board to better provide proper governance over IAS. With those changes, we now have better insight into our financial standing and academic performance. Our decline in academic performance is in direct correlation to the funding error that was discovered last summer and has since been corrected. Approximately $700,000 is the amount per year that made up that error. I know the CFO talked this afternoon about our fund balance or lack thereof, but I'm sure you can agree $2.1 million would have done a lot for our fund balance. This money would have allowed us to offer our teachers more competitive wages, to retain more as opposed to losing about 40% over the past two years. It's hard to maintain academic success with such a teacher turnover. With the increased funding and Title I money coming in next year, we can address our academic deficiencies with the proper resources. Bringing in a full-time academic coach is the first item of business to address this huge drop. The last thing I'll say is this.
Time, Mr. Longuino.
You have in your hand a letter from April 14th from the state. That letter says it urges Cobb County to give International Academy of Smyrna a two-year extension because we deserve it.
Time, Mr. Longuino.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carrie Schrock. And before she starts, I'll mention that you should have each received the attachment that our previous speaker mentioned. Next speaker is Carrie Schrock, who will discuss IAS charter renewal.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Schrock, and I'm the proud principal of IAS. Thank you for this opportunity. Within the final 90 days of our five-year charter term, you've seen data that suggests both the academic and financial failure of IAS. Make no mistake, in this critical time of data-driven decision-making, we neither hide nor turn away from our identified areas of growth. We strongly believe our 2016 results are an anomaly, not a reflection of our past performance or our future potential. Regardless of how the error occurred, IAS was underfunded by approximately $2.1 million over three consecutive years, the same three years that reflect a negative trend in student achievement. Without that significant loss in eligible state funding, fiscal viability and fund balance would no longer be an issue. Bond service and debt covenant would be covered. The rate of teacher turnover due to less than competitive salaries becomes a thing of the past. Title I funds estimated at $300,000 for next year will greatly assist with highly qualified teacher retention and the purchase of targeted instructional resources. It is important to note, the high percentage of our budget applied to facilities and operations is because unlike the district, we do not have access to splashed funding. Additionally, the debt relief generously offered by our bondholders to survive the funding shortfall last year will be repaid in full by the close of this fiscal year. The change of position by the charter division without assignment of blame is tied directly to our loss of close to $2.1 million in funding over three out of five years of this charter term. We have a 10-year relationship with the district here in Smyrna. As a valued school of choice, we continue to have a waiting list. Every issue raised today could have been avoided had we received proper funding for the health insurance stipend.
Time.
This should not be how our story ends.
Our next speaker is Bianca Isom, who will be followed by Essence Johnson, and she will discuss IAS charter renewal.
Hello, everyone. My name is Bianca Isom. I'm a parent of two students at IAS and a member of the PTA Executive Board. This is our seventh year with the IAS family. My daughter Mackenzie and my son Blake have both attended IAS since kindergarten and are now in sixth and third grade. For seven years, we've chosen IAS over and over again. We choose IAS because it's more than a school. It's a family. It's more than education. Parents and students, it's a village. A village of like-minded individuals all focused on one common goal, the success of our children. It's more than a curriculum. It's a non-traditional, out-of-the-box, transparent learning environment through the collaborative engagement of our village. It's more than a lesson plan. It's a learning experience focused every day on every child being a caring, well-rounded, open-minded achiever and lifelong learner. It's more than a list of ID numbers, staff members, students, and metrics. Each and every one of us has a name. Each of us has a role and are valued at our school. Each of us are challenged and empowered to embrace the uniqueness and individuality that we have to offer. We're committed, committed to the nurturing development and overall success of our students, our staff, and our families. We are more than our test scores. We are resilient. We are dedicated, and we are devoted to our school. If everyone who's here in support of International Academy would please stand. We are here tonight with IAS as a united family and as a village. Whatever our sins may be, we don't deserve the death penalty.
Our next speaker is Essence Johnson, who will discuss, excuse me, board transparency, followed by Callie McGregor.
Good evening. My name is Essence Johnson. I'm here this evening to address the lack of transparency amongst the Cobb County School Board. The definition of transparency is free from pretense or deceit, easily detected or seen through, readily understood, characterized by visibility or accessibility of information, especially concerning business practice. Three years ago, I moved to Cobb County because of the exemplary school system. I am a mother and have a school-aged son. I am concerned about the board's lack of transparency in addressing parents' and student concerns. As it currently stands, the public is not aware of how you are addressing concerns. Rather, it appears that you have dismissed concerns brought to you, which conveys disrespect and potentially possess a threat to the welfare of our students. There's a major difference between listening to concerns and hearing concerns. Specifically, I would like the board to document the concerns that parents and students have raised to the boards in phone calls, emails, and through public comment. There should be a clear and transparent report of every concern expressed to the board, and this document should be accessible to the public. I ask the board to also openly communicate with the Cobb community as to what steps the board is taking to address these concerns and what resources are they using to do so. In closing, I leave you with this. Lack of trust is the inevitable consequence of the lack of transparency. You, the board, need to address the lack of transparency and resolve the issues within the Cobb County schools. I request, per your policy, a written response to my request by the appropriate administrator within 30 days.
Our next speaker is Callie McGregor, who will discuss policy change request, followed by Laura Oropesa.
Good evening, board. CCSD Board of Education Policy states that the board provides a 30-minute public comment session at each board meeting to allow individuals the opportunity to address the board. It also states that speakers will have an allotted amount of time, up to five minutes, to speak before the board, with the time for speaker being determined by the chair, depending on the number of speakers, with a maximum of 15. Upon review of meetings going back to August 2015, we have found that regardless of the number of speakers, the chair has allotted no more than two to three minutes per speaker, and often only one minute. Further, the public comment portion has never reached, let alone exceeded, the allotted 30 minutes, with the average time being about seven. Members of this board, this seemingly capricious practice of time allotment by the chairperson conveys a message to the public that you do not want to hear us. We feel that the speaker time limits should no longer rest at the discretion of the chairperson, and we request the change to the board policy to allot no less than five minutes per speaker and for that to be codified in the policy. We feel that this policy change will support and enable concerned citizens of Cobb County to adequately prepare their remarks to the board. We also feel that this policy change achieves an immediate win for the board and the citizens of Cobb County in the interest of respectful collaboration and overall benefit to our students and community. We ask that the board confer and give serious consideration to this request. It is our belief that the public's ability to communicate their feedback and concerns should be of the utmost importance to the school board.
30 seconds.
The current time allotment practice has the appearance of being arbitrary. The current time allotment practice has the appearance of being arbitrary and unrelated to the number of speakers. It conveys a message of disrespect to the constituents, and it does not achieve the desired purpose of making the public feel heard. Finally, per Section 2M of public participation, I am requesting a written response to this policy change request from the appropriate administrator within 30 days. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Laura Oropeza, who will discuss International Academy of Smyrna, and she'll be followed by Dawn Ferris.
Good evening. I am here to discuss International Academy of Smyrna. It is my sister's first year there. She is in sixth grade. She's here today. Her name is Maria Antonia Oropeza. And I just want to start off, as I told the teachers when I went to the orientation, you haven't, I know you've probably seen helicopter parents, but you have not seen a helicopter sister, and that is why I'm here today. I feel that IAS has made a tremendous impact on my sister. Every time that I've contacted a teacher, I get an almost immediate response within 24 to 48 hours, which is something that was not happening at her previous school. When I ask her if she wants to go to the school that she is supposed to, the local school, she says that she wants to stay at IAS. I have seen tremendous change in her academics. She's more focused. She's more self-assured. She is, she feels that she can do whatever she wants and what she wants to do and be. And when I ask her, how did you, why is that change? And she's told me, it's my teachers. I feel that my teachers actually listen to me. They pay more attention to me. They care. They are patient, and I can see that just in my correspondence with the teachers. When I told them, I will be very involved. My parents are involved, but I am more involved. They said, you know what? It's fine. We will respect you, and I feel listened. So not only, and I know when she says that, that it's not just her as a student. It's me as her sibling and as a representative of her. And I do plead you to please renew the charter because I know that I am not the only one who feels this way. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Dawn Ferris, who will discuss IAS, and she'll be followed by Dr. Vernon Allwood.
Good evening. To all of you today, y'all don't understand how this school means to us. This is our family. It's like you breaking up a marriage, a family. Y'all taking it apart. I chose to bring my kid here because she has special needs, and I could have put her at any public school, but I have a school that the principal knows us. We're like her cousin, aunts, uncles. We're all connected. When we have events, everybody hug each other. Everybody's a family. So yes, academically, we are pushing and we're working together as that family. Sometimes you have somebody that fall, but you don't keep them down. You push them back up, and that is what all of these people here do. We push each other. We are one unit together. I've never been in a school where I know the principal. She hugs me, and she knows my daughter. And my daughter runs up at her and help her. When they need help, my daughter need a help, they found the foundation, the teachers care. They're like their nieces and their nephew. They don't treat them like they're just some students. They're going to leave at 3:00, and the day is over. Everybody know IAS day does not stop at 3:00. We are there. We are pushing together. We have events, and we enjoy each other. It's like Thanksgiving. It's like Christmas at IAS. With a little learning on the side that they make it enjoyable for the kids. It's not just, oh, here's a book, and you don't get it? Okay, fine. They're going to find a way to make it interesting so you can understand the learning. Yes, it was a financial situation that put us in here, but a lot of times, we don't have money to maybe pay the light bill. But does that mean we need to move? Do we shut stuff down because of these situations? No. What do we do? What I'm asking you guys to do, please reach in your heart and realize that the decision that you make, it affects a lot of people. All of us are trying to hold our tears together and be respectful, but I want you, when y'all make this decision, really think about where we choose to send our children, what we think about every day. All I have to say is just pray for us and that y'all make a good decision. Thank you.
Dr. Vernon Allwood will discuss IAS, and he'll be followed by Stephen Allwood.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you today. I speak as an educational professional, also a grandparent of two beautiful grandchildren in IAS. I'm a retired professor from Morehouse College and Morehouse School of Medicine, also founding board member of Care Vision Academy and Atlanta City Public School System. I'm very familiar with charter schools, and what charter schools do is give parents choice and provide competition. That's a good thing. I also know that charter schools, if they can't compete and perform, they need to be closed down. But they need to be given the resources to function. As we look at the situation here, and it's been documented that the resources were not given to the schools so they could operate. My two grandchildren have been here for six years. One's a fourth grader, one's a sixth grader. They both love the school. They're avid readers. They can't wait to get to school. When they're sick, we have to force them to get out of bed and go to school. You know, we talk a lot about standardized test scores, but there's other ingredients that measure success. We often talk about the hidden curriculum, the interaction between teachers and students, the attitudes that students have about the learning, and those are ingredients that are very, very important. I know when I go to pick up my grandchildren, I see the culture. I see the environment. I see the love that exists. And my experiences in education, there were two kinds of school districts. One type of school district encourages charter schools. They know education is difficult, no simple answers. We need innovation, creative approaches to education. The other short-sighted school districts, they're too concerned about the resources and forget about the real value of charter schools. Thank you.
Stephen Allwood will discuss IAS, followed by Jillian Ford.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to speak here tonight. I come before you as a parent of, that was my dad, so the two grandchildren he talked about are my daughters. I've written you all two emails over the course of the past week, and the first one talking about what my kids have achieved there. I'm not going to spend too much time tonight kind of tooting my own kid's horn, because all of us, I hope what you've heard, we're all aware of the situation with the test scores, and we're not making light of that at all. And we want all the kids' IAS to succeed. The last email that I sent you all yesterday, I hope you read it. I began by saying that tonight you decide the fate of a community, and I hope you've heard that tonight, that, and I hope that when you look at us, you see a community and not just a school. I'm a psychologist by training, and I do lots of assessments. I don't do school assessments, but I assess individuals, and I have grad students that I train. And I always tell them that if you give someone a test and it says they're depressed, or it says something about their IQ, that's a tool in your toolbox, but you never make a diagnosis based solely on a test score. You have to look at the whole picture. And so, you know, I hope you've heard that we're certainly taking responsibility for the test scores. We're willing to work hard to make up for that, and we just hope that you'll see that the decision you make tonight affects a whole community. It affects kids who've made friendships.
30 seconds.
And all of us have chosen to stick with IAS through, you know, all the issues we've had. All of us have really benefited from IAS. Our kids have flourished and thrived there. And so I just implore you tonight to give us a chance with the proper resources to show we can do. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jillian Ford, who will discuss Snapchat, followed by Dr. Caprice Thomas.
My name is Jillian Ford. I'm a professor at Kennesaw State University of Educational Equity. What my topic actually said was the Snapchat threat that was made at North Cobb High School last month or the month before. I'm very concerned, like some of the other parents have shared, about a lack of transparency, not only from this Board, but at this point from the high school. A terroristic threat was made to our kids, and nothing has been done. We have a president in this country who has banned people for things that he calls terroristic threats. A student at North Cobb High School sent out a terroristic threat. Did you all read that? Are you not allowed to answer yes or no? Did you have a chance to read that Snapchat? Because it was talking [BLEEP] and people with big lips and some really terroristic stuff and bringing slavery back. So what I would like to see, as however many of you sit up there saying that you care about our students and our children, is for you or for Cobb County, North Cobb High School Administration, to set up a process whereby the community-concerned parents on all sides can get together and talk about how we move forward from this. This is not business as usual. I'm out there, I see two white ladies with a headset on, you know, stapling papers like this is business as usual. I'm sorry, we still had a terroristic threat that nothing has been done about. So I don't want it to be business as usual, like it is every month. I would like for something to be done, and I would also like to be notified in 30 days if it has been. Thank you.
Our final speaker this evening, Mr. Chair, is Dr. Caprice Thomas, who will discuss IAS.
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to address you all tonight. I actually spent some time thinking about whether I wanted to be a voice here tonight. The reason for that is there are so many strong voices at IAS that there's probably very little need for me to speak. However, there's a niche that I felt I needed to talk about tonight, and that is people of privilege. I am one of the people of privilege of Cobb County. I've lived here for 21 years, 17 of which I've been a homeowner and lived in a very good area. In other words, the district that I live in, most of the people make at least a half million dollars in order to support themselves. We are not that family. We happen to be one of the families who moved into a very nice neighborhood, and every month we make decisions about how we are going to make our needs get met. Part of that decision is education. For us, in order to get an international baccarat education, we had to make a public school choice. IAS was that public school choice for us. My husband has spent years self-flagellating because he could not afford Atlanta International School. I have stood up and clapped with both hands every year that my kids have been at IAS because they are receiving an education that so few children in the entire United States get to have, and they get it for free. If we don't have this option, my youngest two children will be going to a primary school that does not have that option. And because of that, I have spent many days in tears. It is exceedingly important that we continue to achieve in this area, and that includes looking outside the box. IAS looks outside the box, and the way that they do that is through international baccarat. We hope that you will consider the special education we are receiving as you make your decision. Thank you.
That concludes public comment, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Members of the Board, I'm going to ask Deputy Superintendent John Adams to bring all items requiring action following executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Chair. It's my pleasure to bring you the Human Resources Personnel Report for this evening, April 20th, 2017. The Administration recommends the approval of the identified employment actions of those individuals listed on the Personnel Action Report as discussed in executive session. We do have seven principal-level and higher-position recommendations this evening. Peggy Fleming, reassignment to Principal Rocky Mount Elementary School, effective July 1. Carmen Haverilla, Principal Davis Elementary School, resignation, effective June 30. Andrea, Dr. Andrea Jenkins-Mann, appointment to Principal McCluskey Middle School, effective July 1. Gail May, reassignment to Principal Bells Ferry Elementary School, effective July 1. Elizabeth Murphy, reassignment to Principal Fair Oaks Elementary School, effective July 1. Dr. Hermia Simmons DeVoe, reassignment to Principal Milford Elementary School, effective July 1. And Ladonna Starnes, reassignment to Principal Dewest Elementary School, effective July 1. This concludes the Human Resources Personnel Report.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Do we have a motion? Mr. Scamahorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Make a motion to approve as read.
Okay. Do we have a second? Mr. Wheeler, I saw him first. Mr. Wheeler, seconds. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, please. All right, 7-0. All right, next, we have Board Business. I'm sorry, Mr. Sweeney with the FNT Committee Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I attended the, excuse me, the Facilities and Technology Citizens Oversight Committee meeting Monday, April 17, and the committee reviewed and supported each SPOS agenda items before us this evening, specifically Agenda Item 6 through Agenda Item Number 11.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Any questions or discussions about the FNT Report? Mr. Morgan?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I would like to appoint an FNT Committee member. The person that I'm appointing, her name is Anjanette King-Dolls. She's my new appointee.
Denise, did you get that? Okay.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Madam.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Anybody else? All right. Thank you for that report, Mr. Sweeney. Now, without objection, we have three items that are on the consent agenda. Is that right? One, two, three? All right. Without objection. What's that?
You have need to identify them.
All right. Okay. All right. All right. Let's see, Agenda Item, let's see, Recommendation to Approve the Board Resolution to Rescind a Portion of the Modification of the Hayes Elementary School Facility from the Previously Submitted FY 2017 State Capital Outlay Application. All right. Oh, and one, yes.
One, four, and five.
One, four, and five. Is that enough? Do I need to read them all? Okay. All right. So are we there?
Just should probably identify what they are.
Okay.
I'm happy to read them.
Well, do we need to read them? We just, huh? I mean, normally we just say consent agenda, right?
However you want to do it.
Okay. All right. I think, I don't see any reason to read them all off. It's in the agenda. Okay, so now we can go to the discussion items.
All right, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Agenda Item Number 2 is the Recommendation to Affirm SPOS Funds to Build New Harmony Leland Clay Elementary School and Approve Precision of General Fund Balance Commitment for New Harmony Leland Clay Elementary School in South Cobb. Is my recommendation to affirm the SPOS funds to build New Harmony Leland Clay Elementary School and Approve Precision of General Fund Balance Commitment for New Harmony Leland Clay Elementary School in South Cobb. Per our discussion during the work session, be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Okay. Do we need a motion?
Well, Mr. Chair, there was discussion on this item, I believe, about possibly modifying it.
Okay.
And we didn't really have an opportunity to work this one up, but I would just say, if we could make whatever action Mr. Scamahorn had proposed, if you can just put something in there subject to legal review, then I'll have everything I need out of it.
All right. Mr. Scamahorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm trying to remember what I said, but what I believe that I wanted to amend it as to replace the $1.8 million that we've already expended from the general fund. So that's what I would like to propose, from SPOS 5, when appropriate.
Subject to legal review.
Right. Subject to, do I need to repeat that?
Does her second, all right, she's got it. All right, we have a motion. Mr. Sweeney, seconds. Any discussion? All right, one more thing. All right, one more thing.
Just because this one Brad has preached to me all the time here, I want to make sure that we get the motion to verbalize exactly what the recommendation is. So if you could just reread the motion to start with what's listed here, and then add your additional language at the end of it, please.
Okay, Mr. Chair, if I may revise, let me, rather than recommend an amendment, let me read, rather than read it again, add to Agenda Item Number 2, to replace the $1.8 million from SPOS 5, when appropriate. Right, with the recommendation.
It's fine to, he doesn't have to restate the recommendation, it's written down.
Yeah, I said the recommendation, then added to. Okay.
Okay, so that's the motion?
Motion.
All right, is that a second? All right, do we have a second? Mr. Morgan?
I have a part of the motion.
Okay, all right, Ms. Thayer.
We also said that, and I don't know whether this needs to be stipulated or not, in the, we said, when appropriate would include looking at, that the overcapacity schools must be taken care of first. So does that need to be stated? Because we may not all be on the board by the time that happens, so does that need to be stated in some way?
Well, let me ask, let me ask this question. Is this something that is, you're anticipating or desiring to have come back to the board for a vote? Because if that's the case, I would just say, vote on this item as it is, and then just make a direction to the superintendent to bring that item back, and that way it comes back.
Yeah, like that.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I've made the motion, we were looking for a second.
Okay, well, Mr. Morgan's seconding, but then we have discussion.
Right, but let's back up a little bit, because if, I'm not sure if that was a main motion, or if you were seeking to amend this one, but the plan I had is just to, you all will vote on the Agenda Item as it is, and then you could say, without objection, we don't even need to vote on that, that the superintendent is directed to bring this back when appropriate, subject to legal review, also discussing the prioritizations. And if there's no objection, then we can just make a note of that, Ms. LaRosa, and we're fine on that one, and all you need is a motion and a second to approve the Agenda Item.
Okay, so we're back to the motion as stated.
In the Agenda Item.
In the Agenda Item, the recommendation to affirm SPOS funds to build New Harmony Leland Clay Elementary School and approve rescis, is that it?
Yes.
Of general fund balance commitment for New Harmony Leland Clay Elementary School in South Cobb. All right, so that's the motion. Mr. Morgan, are you seconding the original motion? All right, now we have the original motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? Okay, then let's vote. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, any opposed? None? Okay, that we got done. All right, Mr. Superintendent?
Are we good? Okay.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Let me get to the modified motion, I apologize. All right, so, let me restate again, especially to all the members that have come tonight and spoken in public comment, those that have not spoken in public comment, and also those that have taken the time to submit emails on both sides of this issue. We have received those, we've read those, we have spent literally hundreds of hours on this topic. This decision does not come easy, it does not come flippantly. And as discussed during the presentation today, you saw the data that we did present. The one thing that I will add is that I am recommending, as part of this recommendation to the board, that we reopen, assuming the board approves the recommendation. We want to also make part of that to reopen school choice to only those students of International Academy of Smyrna. And at this point in time, it's the recommendation to not approve the International Academy of Smyrna charter request for renewal extension petition.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Sweeney? Excuse me, I have a second. Mr. Wheeler, seconds, is there a discussion? Mr. Morgan?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. As Superintendent said, you know, one of the things that's very, very important in this matter, I feel safe in saying this for my other colleagues, is that, you know, we're very well aware of how deeply invested everyone is about this school, whether it's an email, telephone calls, text messages, or going back when the school started. I mean, I know that it was imagined, and now it's a standalone entity, but a decade. And as I said to my colleagues today, during our work session, that I know firsthand what it's like to be a part of a charter school. I led a charter school. Very complete transparency, I led a charter school in Atlanta Public Schools. And I know what it's like to have, to feel like that the district is setting you up to fail, when you feel like we're trying our best, yet there are underpinnings of a district that is trying to undermine you because they don't want you in existence, for whatever reason. And I know the pain and emotion that I felt when they closed the school that I was the leader of. I keep that near and dear to my heart, and at that time, I had no idea that I would be a school board member. But one of the things that I always said was that I would not, I made a commitment, and I keep the commitment, I will not treat people in that manner. I felt like they were unfeeling, they were selfish, and they could care less about whether the school remained, well, no, they could care less about how it impacted our school. That's one part of the equation. The other part of the equation is when I hold my hand up for an oath, it is to look at all the information objectively. And if Chris Ragsdale and his staff was bringing me a bunch of information that I thought was erroneous, that I thought was not factual, that I thought in any way, shape, or form undermined, Academy Internet, is A.I.S., right?
A.I.S.
I.A.S. I.A.S. I always get the A and I backwards, I apologize. To, if I felt like any of the information was erroneous, or half-baked, or just some vendetta to get rid of a quality school, then I would be the first one to say it. I'd be the first one to say, hey, this is not the case. So, Mr. Superintendent, we had a presentation today, and, but I know how it is, even if you and I know, sometimes, or if some people don't know. And, you know, they'll think that, you know, we're just up here rubber-stamping whatever it is you say, we're not looking into the information. So though these are things that I've researched, information that you have brought forward, information that they have sent us, there's a series of questions that I have, with the superintendent or the staff. First thing, I read, literally, hundreds of emails that said that there was financial malfeasance, negligence on the district's part in terms of the school functioning properly. Know, we went over it executive session, know it very well, but just for the sake of, if someone's watching, or if someone's sitting out there, and you haven't heard this, you haven't heard from the district, or you think there's something that needs to be answered, I just want to make sure that it's out there in the public, so that these questions can be answered. So what would be, that's my first question, what would be the district's response to financial malfeasance or negligence on behalf of the district in terms of impeding the charter school?
So, one correction that I'll make, just because it was a slip, you said executive session, and it was the work session.
Work session, I apologize.
Yeah, work session. So my response to that question is absolutely not, and we can have Mr. Johnson answer any specific financial-related questions, or Deputy Superintendent Adams. And I will go on to say too, as well, because we said this in the work session today as well, that this recommendation is to surely not be interpreted as we are anti-charter, and more specifically, anti-IAS. This decision was made based on empirical data that was presented today, and so my response to your question is absolutely not.
Next question that I have is, one of the things that eld when I was leaving a charter school was that the district did not give us access to information. We were treated like stepchildren. We didn't, we couldn't get, whether it was curriculum, whether it was trainings, whether it was any number of things, those were things that they just flat-out said, no, you cannot do it, you cannot be a part of this. When it comes to access across the board, whether it's leadership training, whether it's special education, whether it's curriculum, any of those things, what is taking place in terms of making sure that A.I.S., I mean I.A.S., I.A.S. has the level of access that it deserves, because they are, you know, teaching our babies, because these babies are in our school district?
Sure, so, again, obviously, it was quite a lengthy presentation today, but Dr. Davis, if you will, you know, obviously, this information was shared, but I appreciate the question because I think it bears also sharing this evening. So Mary Elizabeth, if you will, talk about the list of resources that was presented today, discussing exactly the support that was provided and offered.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Ragsdale. During the work session today, we were able to share the resources and coordinated support provided to IAS leadership and their staff during the term of the most recent charter. This included access to lesson plans and assessment resources, as well as professional learning, including the participation of several staff members in CCSD-funded endorsement programs, including gifted endorsement and the ELL endorsement program. It included all of the CCSD academic communication, which includes all of any information, re-science fair STEM programs, art programs, RTI resources, digital teaching tips, professional learning opportunities, professional journals, examples of model classrooms. All staff and leadership have been invited to any professional learning event scheduled for CCSD staff over the course of their charter term. Additionally, there is support and coordination for the testing coordinator at IAS, and all special education trainings and meetings were provided to IAS staff and leadership at no cost to IAS. Additionally, we do have specific support from the CCSD Special Education Assistant Director, who provided support in mediations and IEP meetings upon request. There was support from CCSD leaders in the delivery of gifted services, speech-language pathology, occupational therapy, and school counseling, including the loaning of assessment resources when requested. Additionally, IAS had been invited to send a team to participate in a positive behavior intervention supports training at no cost to IAS, which would impact CCRPI performance by a point, and IAS was not able to attend. There has been the inclusion of the IAS leadership team in all of the superintendent's leadership meetings that are held throughout the course of the year. And I would add that due to the creation of VPN accounts, IAS leadership and their teachers have had access to all CCSD employee resources on the Cobb County School District Intranet. This include, for example, a full collection of the entire benchmark system for math and English language arts available at their disposal. I will also add that in the creation of student learning objectives as required by state law, the district had included and invited IAS leadership to be a part of the development process. I do have a sample of the SLO assessments that are hand-delivered digitally to IAS, to be used at no charge to IAS. And even when transitions have been made to alternative SLO assessments, we have continued to provide highly effectively designed assessments in the K through 3 areas in addition to those. That summarizes many other resources that we shared at the work session today, and these are all in kind at no cost IAS.
Thank you, and two other quick questions, Ms. Chair and I asked them at the same time. First is, we saw the information about the test scores, and anyone that's been in education know, as the public speaker mentioned, you know, you can't say, you know, look at a test score and say a school is good, bad, marginal, whatever the case might be. In the, in the three-year drop in test scores, my first question is, were, overall, were the test scores close to, I mean, was it a close margin, that they were almost about to meet whatever the metric or the objective was? Or was there a large disparity? And the second and final question I have before I hear, Mr. Chair, were there any amendments submitted to the charter agreement in terms of, hey, we see some things that are, we see some things that are, you know, we need to fix, or we need to get right? Were there any amendments brought forward to the district to try to change maybe the objectives as they were presented in the charter, in the charter agreement?
So, Mr. Morgan, I've asked Denise to bring up the graph that we ended the presentation with today, that represents a separation of the performance between elementary school students at IAS and middle school students at IAS. You can see the trend from school year 2012, 13 through 2016 on both sets of students. We can bring up the additional graphs if you like, about that showed the meeting of the standards, but I think this graph speaks for itself. And then per our attorney during the work session, he indicated that there were no amendments that were received by the district, except for the one that dealt with the separation from Imagine, and then ultimately, the creation of IAS. Liam, is there anything else you want to add to that?
No, and just being precise, a review of the minutes didn't reveal any that the board had considered.
Thank you for the time, Mr. Chair, and this is a decision that we take very seriously. It's a hard matter for us, because, you know, we do this because we want the best for all of our children. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Any more comments for discussion? Ms. Thayer?
Thank you. And parents, thank you for being here tonight, and school members, staff members who've been here. We did have a lengthy discussion this afternoon and presentation on some information. I regret that while our staff presented things, we didn't have a presentation from IAS also, because I think sometimes it's good to hear last things. But let me talk for a second. We also talked about it's healthy for an organization to have different views, and I do have a different view. Whether or not this school was in my community, I would feel the same way about it. If I felt that the school was a detriment to students in any way, I would have no problem in voting against the charter, because I take that, I'm a lifelong educator, I take that very seriously. But I don't feel that way. I think there, and excuse my voice, it's pollen, I'm not about to cry, so don't worry about that, it just sounds like that. But, but anyway, I've looked at the data, and I've looked at the evidence, and I think some of it, I guess, because curriculum and instruction and testing was my thing, I was in my wheelhouse, as Mr. Sweeney likes to use that term, I don't even know what a wheelhouse is, but anyway. It makes me want to get in there and do some things, but I think when you look at the deficit in the But I think when you look at the deficit in the funding and what that did with the hiring of uncertified teachers and the quality of the teaching staff, and you look at the declining socioeconomic level, which means you just qualified for free and reduced, your free and reduced lunch just qualified you for Title I, that says a lot about the declining test scores there. So, I think that explains a lot of things. The nosedive I don't understand, that says something, that's not typical. So, there's something that happened there. But anyway, that's to be looked into. I think that the financial, you found the $700,000 and you qualify for, for Title I. So, I do hope board members will reconsider and, and again, I think you, this is a choice and these parents have, have made the choice. They want their children to attend this school. We have found the financial problems to start the school in the right way. Certainly, the academic focus of this school is going to have to do an immediate turnaround. Obviously, that has not been happening there. The academic leadership there is going to really, really have to refocus because it's not there, that the test scores show you that. Things are going to have to change in that department. So, whether they're good intentions or not, that's going to have to change. But I hope you will look at all that and reconsider and, and give the two years to, to see if they can meet a higher standard. So.
Thank you, Ms. Thayer. Anyone else have anything to contribute to the discussion? All right, Mr. Sweeney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I appreciate all the comments that I've heard and certainly, the comments that have come from the visitors here this evening. You know, the one thing that I think comes across sometimes is that perhaps, you know, maybe, you know, this body is anti-charter. I can tell you that this board has taken several pro-charter stances, starting with the approval, initial approval and then the renewal of the charter for IAS. Since I've been on this body, I've also participated and worked hand-in-hand with charter approvals for Sedalia Park Elementary School and also for Walton High School and have voted to support the renewal of the Kennesaw Charter as well. And a charter is real simple. I mean, I don't want to, I'm not trying to belittle this, but it's a performance-based contract. And it's agreement that a school enters into, or I should say, the leadership of a school enters into with the school district, providing accountability in exchange for basically, you know, a charter, their ability to do what they would like to do and perhaps, teach a bit differently. And with that comes accountability. During the presentation we heard earlier today, there were multiple metrics that were identified, the accountability metrics, and we went through 21 of those accountability metrics. And it's our understanding from the presentation that only four of those accountability metrics were met. And I believe that three of those were attendance-related. Is that correct? Or four? Four of the accountability metrics were attendance-related, leaving, and if you take those off the map, I mean, you're looking at zero out of 17, zero out of 17 performance metrics that were met. Mr. Morgan hit on a couple of things and appreciate the responses from the superintendent because many of the emails that I received also suggested, for example, that this body intentionally withheld funds, intentionally withheld other things. As a board member, as a board member, this body approves an annual budget for the school district. And then, the district, the school district is responsible for the administration of those funds. This body as a whole never, never gets into a situation where they single out a charter school for funding purposes in any way, shape or form. And that's a very, very important distinction to understand. And it's also my understanding that the so-called $700,000 per year was actually not something that this board or the school district is responsible for. But this is state funding. This is state funding that was not appropriately applied for. Is that correct, Mr. Johnson?
This is a, it's, the health insurance is part of the CPI report and it was not recorded appropriately with codes on that CPI report.
Okay. And so, when we hear a $2.1 million figure, that's not an annual figure. That's an aggregate for $700,000 that was not appropriately funded or requested for a three-year period. Is that correct?
That's correct.
From the state, not from the Cobb County School District. Okay. You know, again, you know, as I've said, it's, this is a matter for me person of, you know, the accountability and we went through a lot of the financial issues earlier today. We talked about the debt covenants and I'm not going to get into each and every one of these areas because we went through a very, very in-depth presentation earlier today as well as an extensive Q and A portion. But those are my questions and comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Anyone else have anything they'd like to contribute? Okay, are we ready for the question? All right. The motion is to support the superintendent's recommendation for non-renewal of the IS charter along with the affirmation that we support him in opening up choice for the students who will be displaced. IAS students can apply for those seats available in schools of choice. Okay? Is that, does that pretty much sum it up? Okay. So, all right. All right, so we need a motion to support that. Scott made it. We have a motion in a second. Now, we just need the votes. All in favor of supporting the superintendent? One, two, three, four, five, six, one. Ms. Thayer voted no, I assume. Raise your hand for no. That's the, there we go. All right. And that's, that's it. All right. Do you think we ought to take a break right now? Okay, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As Agenda Items Number Four and Five were on consent, I'll ask Deputy Superintendent John Adams to come forward with the remaining agenda items for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Agenda Items Six through 10, as we discussed in detail during the day meeting, involve roof replacements. Agenda Item Number Six, Recommendation for Approval Toward a Contract for Roof Replacement at Dodge and Middle School. As discussed in detail during the day meeting, we recommend you award the contract for this roof replacement to Tecta America Southeast in the amount of $2.083 million.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Is there any questions or discussion? Mr. Sweeney?
I make a recommendation that we accept Agenda Item Number Six.
Okay, a recommendation motion. Mr. Wheeler, seconds. All those in favor, raise your hand. Oh, all right, next please.
Thank you very much. Pardon me. Agenda Item Number Seven, Recommendation for Approval Toward a Contract for Roof Replacement at Green Acres Elementary School. Again, as discussed in detail during the day meeting and is budgeted in SPOS Four, recommending you award this contract to DW Caldwell Incorporated in the amount of $668,560,000. That concludes this item.
Okay, do we have a motion? Ms. Thayer? Motion. Mr. Scamahorn, seconds. All those in favor, raise your hand. All right, that's good. Next, please, sir.
Thank you, sir. Agenda Item Number Eight, Recommendation for Approval Toward a Contract for Roof Replacement at Hayes Elementary School. Again, in accordance with SPOS Four, recommend you award the contract to replace the roof at Hayes to DW Caldwell Incorporated in the amount of $1.075,892 million, as stated below. And that concludes this item.
Okay, do we have a motion, Mr. Scamahorn? Mr. Scamahorn supports the motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Wheeler, seconds. All those in favor? All right, thank you. Next, please, sir.
Thank you, sir. Agenda Item Number Nine, Recommendation for Approval Toward a Contract for Roof Replacement at Chatham Hill Elementary School. Again, in accordance with SPOS Four, recommend you award this contract to DW Caldwell out of Douglasville. Cost to be $1.154,116 million, as stated below. And that concludes this item.
Okay, do we have a motion? Mr. Wheeler's motion, second. Mr. Scamahorn put his hand up first. All those in favor, raise your hand. All right, that passes. And next, Mr. Adams.
Thank you, sir. And Agenda Item Number Ten, the last of the roof items. Recommendation to, for approval to award a contract for roof replacement at McCleskey Middle School, also SPOS Four. Recommend that this contract be awarded to Superior Roofing Systems out of Loeberne, Georgia. Cost to be $1.43 million, as listed below. And that concludes this, the final roofing item.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. And I'll make the motion as for a second. Mr. Sweeney, put his hand up, second. All those in favor? All right, six, seven, oh. All right, let's see, next.
Thank you, sir. Shifting gears just a bit, Agenda Item Number Eleven, Recommendation for Approval Toward a Contract for Fire Sprinkler Installation at King Springs K-1 at Brown Elementary School and fire alarm and fire sprinkler installation at Haven at Skyview. In accordance with SPOS Three, we're recommending you award this contract to Shirak Contracting out of Mableton, Georgia. Cost to be $1.105 million. And that concludes this item as well.
Okay, do we have a motion, Ms. Thayer?
I say moving since it's SPOS Three, I say it's about time, Mr. Adams.
Amen, Ms. Thayer.
We have a motion, you have a second? Mr. Scamahorn, seconds. All those in favor? All right, seven, oh. All right.
Thanks, sir.
That concludes. Thank you, Mr. Adams. It is now time for board comments and we'll start with Mr. Scamahorn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. But if I may, I'm going to defer until next meeting. I don't have a voice. So, I want to save it so that it can be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. S. Mrs. T.
Thank you. I'm not sure my voice is going to last either. You've got a good, good short term. But I would like to thank the IAS parents who wrote politely to us and expressed their opinions. We value those and I'm sorry that didn't work out the way that you wanted it to. I'd also like to commend that large group for exiting in that shorter time and that, and I know it was a very emotional time for them, but they exited very quietly and very quickly. And I thought that showed a great amount of grace and I appreciate that too. So, I'm sorry it came to that, but I appreciate the parents who've given a lot of time and energy to that school and, and hope that things work out for all those families. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thayer. Mr. Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me ask you, are you going to talk about the egg drop? Well, it's your school. Okay. Want to say, we had a great turnout for the annual Spraberry Egg Drop this past Saturday. There were thousands and thousands and thousands of kids there. They probably put out about 30,000 Easter eggs and they did drop some eggs from the helicopter. So, there, it really is an egg drop. So, want to thank Spraberry for hosting that and all the support they got from the vendors around Cobb County. I noticed some sadness. I got word last night that one of our principals, Lynn Hamlet at Murdoch, went home yesterday and found her husband on the floor and he had a heart attack. So, he, he passed away. So, keep her and her family in prayers and thoughts. I was over at the school this morning and the teachers, they found out this morning. So, I'm sure all the students today know the situation. So, that'll be a stressful time for a few days for the Murdoch students. And I'd like to ask the superintendent to provide the board at some future date a review of what we're doing about opioids. There's been a, on TV, there's been a series of presentations on the drugs. Hopefully, I hope it's not a major problem in our school, but I know we do have some problems. And we even have it on video where kids are going out and getting drugs. So, it would be good for the public and for us to know what we're doing to meet this crisis that's coming because evidently, it's not just a small thing anymore. It's getting bigger and bigger. So, in the future, I would request that a presentation be made to board, to the board, how we're handling it as a school system for our students. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Mr. Wheeler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just brief congratulations to the counselors of the year. Kelly Beecher at Dowell Elementary, Katie Bauer at Lovinggood Middle School and Lisa McCormick at Hill Grove High School. And the administrator of the year for that group was Julie O'Meara at Harrison High School. Other, like I say, counselors of the year, all in post-seven. It's an outstanding group and wish them well. Thank you for the great job they're doing out there.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Mr. Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank, see, Clay, Clay Elementary and Riverside Intermediate. Both of them invited me out for their Milestones pep rally. And I really enjoyed all the dancing by the teachers and the kids and the excitement leading into the milestones. And I think that, again, I think that speaks to the type of culture that we're building in our district. You know, standardized testing is, you know, if it becomes something that you change your perspective and you rally the troops, so to speak, you know, and I appreciate them inviting me out. Also, I want to thank the SGA at Pebblebrook and the SGA at South Cobb. We got together, we got both schools together, they're rivals. And we actually played a kickball game with the seniors and it was really fun. And we had a picnic. And I enjoy being out there around the kids, you know, being, being out there around the kids keep you young. So, I had a great time out there and I want to give kudos for all those things. And also, as you said, Ms. Thayer, for the parents, you know, at the school, IAS, and, and for that support. That's not something that's lost on us. You know, nobody up here is feeling good about having to make a hard decision. So, those conclude my comments. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Sweeney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd also like to extend condolences to Amy Kraus, former chief academic officer for the Cobb County School District. Her husband, Marcus Kraus, passed away, a valiant battle with cancer that he had. And then, secondly, I just wish the students of Cobb County School District much success with the upcoming Milestones tests and of course, tests and the AP exams in their march toward graduation at the high school level. And those conclude my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the opportunity. I'd like to also echo Ms. Thayer's comments about the parents and family members and students that we had from IAS here tonight. I do appreciate the absolute level of class that everyone showed. It was not a difficult decision. Understand that there is an emotional component on the receiving end of that decision. And please know that we are sincere when we say we, we do, in fact, welcome all of the parents and students, those of you that choose to come to the Cobb County School District schools. We want you to bring that level of parental engagement and focus to, to our school. And also, I hope you think and know and understand that the level of sincerity in opening up school choices to provide you with every opportunity that we are able to in this transition period. And, and I want to, the transition from that into, I appreciate the board members this week. We had, speaking of...
We had a speaking of parental engagement. We had a Volunteer of the Year luncheon, and some of these volunteers are parents and some of them are not. I talked with a gentleman that had moved here to Georgia. He had, you know, he saw the light and moved from Philadelphia down to south of the Mason-Dixon line, and, but, but he, he told me, he said it was just a passion to volunteer, to show kids that adults are there that care. And I tell you, it just, it goes above and beyond, and it goes without saying how much we appreciate the volunteers that come into our schools because truly, we are one team, and it takes every team member to achieve the level of success that we do. Next, I'd like to, to talk about, just real brief, an accolade for the district for high school. We've got the 2017 Georgia Scholars that are recognized, and we have 18 graduating seniors from five of our high schools. That is Walton, Pope, Hillgrove, South Cobb, and Harrison. And those honors high school seniors who have achieved excellence in school and community life, so it, it does, it's a significant recognition. And I got to say, you know, I say the best for the last. We had three schools that were removed from the priority and focus list. And so, I got you, Ms. Thayer. Got you covered, got you covered. Osborne High School was removed from the priority schools list, and Bernie and Milford Elementary Schools were removed from the state focus school list, and it means that those schools have worked above and beyond to improve academically, which, again, speaks to our mission of one team, one goal, student success. And so finally, I will close and say, certainly, our condolences and our thoughts and prayers go out to Amy Kraus for the loss of her husband, and also Lynn Hamlet for the loss of her husband. Certainly, you know, we're not guaranteed another minute in whom we have those that we know, friends, family, loved ones, staff members, coworkers, et cetera. It just brings a harsh reality to the shortness and the brevity of, of life that we experience. So with that, Mr. Chair, I yield to the floor to you. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. My wife reminded me of this. I didn't write it down, but maybe somebody knows. The Schuler-Hensley Awards, is that the official name? That's what we call them? We have several schools that are up for awards, I believe. Is it tonight? It's tonight, at 10, if it's being broadcast, I'm told. And I can't remember which schools they are, but Cobb County is being well represented. And I would just like, and I'm surprised that this hit me this way, but the positive thing, there are two words that occurred to me this evening, audacity. I would imagine the most positive picture of audacity is when a handful of people say, we want to take on the system and charter chart, start a charter school, and we're going to do what we can to help our kids. And I'm, I'm sure all of us regret the outcome tonight, but there is your best picture of audacity, a positive, going against the odds, trying to make a change. The other word, advocacy. We have witnessed advocacy this evening, advocacy for our, our kids, for our parents, for our schools. And what I always remind parents when I'm talking to them, is I, is my wife and I were told when our kids were at school, the parents are the number-one advocate for their children, and don't ever, I don't ever want anybody to stop, and I apologize. With that, we're adjourned.